May view and listen to the meeting by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission may do so during public comments or may comment on agenda items during the discussion of each item and must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening, or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms, the target-specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comment. And so the next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two minutes to review. First one is May 25th. Does anyone have any comments or corrections? Kathy, go ahead.
I moved the approve the minutes of May 26th, did you say?
Twenty fifth.
Yes, 25th.
A second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? You know, Carrie, I just have a general question about minutes. You know, we often like in this minute, there's an example, you know, it says the commission asked questions of Mr. Randall, blah, blah, blah. Do we ever document what those questions and answers are, or is it always just?
Um, I think when, when they are substance in terms of an application, um, we do so that there, if there's something about an application that's being reviewed for approval or denial by the commission. But I wanted, the housing presentations were much more conversational in that way. And because we have the recordings, we left it at that for those.
Okay, thanks. I'm just looking for clarification. Yeah. Okay, we have a first and a second, and it sounds like no other comments, so we can take a vote, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Second, we will start with Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Vindan Bush.
Hi.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Hi.
And Chair Fritz.
Hi.
Okay, those minutes are unanimously approved.
All right, then we have some very brief minutes from June 22nd. Any?
To approve.
Oh, let's thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Uh, and I didn't quite catch who moved to approve, and I apologize.
It was Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, give a vote, please.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Vindan Bush.
Hi.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ottinger.
Abstaining.
And Chair Fritz.
Um, I'm not here, remember, I wasn't there, but I will vote aye, so.
Okay. If you've reviewed the video and, and the minutes, that's allowed, so.
Much, much happened.
You're right, so the minutes are approved on a four zero one vote with Commissioner, Vice Chair Ottinger abstaining.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is for comments from members of the public wishing to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Please raise your virtual or actual hand.
Okay, Kyle, can you see the timer?
Yes, I can.
All right, you may proceed.
Um, I was gonna try to refrain from speaking at this moment, but I just wanted to maybe address the repeated absences, lack of quorum, and uh, just kind of attendance with this commission. In the last six months, there has only been two meetings in which full attendance has been acquired. Uh, there are members of this commission who are regularly, frequently absent, and I'm just curious if there is any sort of oversight over that, any sort of ramifications of that, um, any communication with that commissioner about uh, that type of attendance behavior. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kyle. And we have one other member of the public, if via telephone, so if you want to simply unmute yourself, if you had something you'd like to say during this time, that'd be great. Wait a second for that, otherwise we'll assume that public comment is closed. Okay, that looks like that's it from public comment.
Okay, thanks, and you know, I'm sure you know, Kyle, we can't really discuss issues brought up under public comments, because it's not an agenda item, but your comment is definitely noted. Thank you for that.
Yes, and I can note that, yes, we do track attendance of various commissioners, and commissioners often can be excused if they've contacted the planning department and let us know what the reasons are. And it looks like uh, and we have a commissioner, I'll let the chair recognize.
Uh, sure, Everett, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we couldn't have had a full attendance, just because we've had a empty member placeholder essentially. So I think we've had six is the most we've anyone have. And we need to have an alternate.
Okay, so seeing no further public comments, I will ask if any commissioner has a conflict of interest with the agenda tonight. And seeing none, we will move on to our first agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider the general plan compliance of the proposed capital improvement budget for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022. This has been continued from the last item where we did not have a quorum. Uh, can we get a planning director's report, please?
And thank you, Chair Fritz. Uh, yes, we did have excused absences due to some vacations, and we wouldn't have had a last meeting scheduled, but uh, thank you all for reading those materials and coming again this evening so that we can hold this public hearing. I do have with us tonight Tony Bertolaro. She is the wonderful engineer who put together this year's CIP, and it has been an absolute pleasure working with her. We've actually done a lot of work updating a lot of the cost estimates and recognizing some lingering projects that needed to go forward and strategizing about that, so I want to thank her for all her collaborative work on this, and she and I are going to go through the presentation together. Let me just make sure I share my screen. Um, can you all see my screen?
Yeah.
Great, okay, and now I need to make sure I can advance, okay. Um, so tonight we're going to the, the role of the planning commission under state law, uh, when it comes to a capital improvement plan is to ensure that the, the items that are contained, that the city is funding in its decision-making to approve a budget, a capital improvement plan budget and funding is to make sure that they're consistent with the general plan. So what we have done as staff is we've gone through the various projects, you have the uh, the full budget link, but we've gone through the various projects and identified the general plan items, goals, actions, or policies that relate to each of those items and outline those in the, in the, in the report. We're just going to go over the, the project list and happy to answer any questions the commission may have on the various projects. First, and then we'll go through the general plan consistency items for the commission. We do have a resolution before you tonight for your consideration. In terms of where this is at with city council, city council did, uh, they started their hearings on June 15th. They did not get to, they got to the regular budget started on June 15th, but they did not get to the CIP. There were a couple of special meetings, um, June 30th, I believe, was the main one where the capital improvement plan is reviewed. Uh, and then it was adopted contingent on the planning commission approving the general plan consistency items at their last meeting on July 6th. Uh, and we'll try to, for the parks projects, I'll review those, Tony will review the uh, other capital improvements, and as the planning commission is also parks, uh, commission, you'll recognize most of them. The council has made a couple of changes and we'll just review those quickly and certainly can discuss any questions the commission has on those. Uh, and Tony, do you want to say just a couple of words about how a capital improvement plan works? And you know, in terms of the, the length of projects and how it's, how they, the role for the city?
Sure, basically, a capital improvement program is a list of infrastructure projects for the city, and it's typically a five-year or a 10-year plan for the city of Sebastopol. They, they approve a five-year capital improvement program, CIP. And what council does is they actually consider for adoption, the budget for the first year of the CIP. So just year one, since they have to approve a budget every year. Although they do take a look at the five-year CIP and have that as the plan, and they, they approve it, but they, they, they can't really adopt it because they can't adopt the budget at that time. So these capital improvement projects are typically, they come from various planning reports, master planning reports that the city has, traffic safety corridor studies, you probably heard of that for State Route 116, and then just a number of ongoing, um, I call them maintenance projects, but they're called capital projects because obviously you're maintaining a road, a lot of times you're doing uh, major reconstruction or major overlays for a roadway, and so those are also included in the budget. And so the way the budget is actually prepared is that all the department heads get together, they look at all their long-range planning documents, and they, they identify what the needs are based on those documents. And then that's how we come up with this CIP. Um, a lot of the projects that you'll see on here are carryovers from prior years. I think as Carrie mentioned, some of these projects have been ongoing, and for a number of reasons, they haven't been completed either because of lack of funding. A lot of times, um, we'll assume that there's going to be some grant funding for a project, but if that grant, um, grant doesn't come through, obviously the project gets delayed. And so you'll see a number of projects that have been kind of pushed, um, um, from prior years. So, um, we have the, if you look, the way the CIP budget document is set up is that it is done by categories, and there's a listing of major categories, and it's actually a very easy document for the public to also go through. If they go through the table of contents, that's usually the first place to start, it's on page one of the document, and it has a list of, um, basically nine different categories. And so the you and members of the public can go directly to that table of contents to focus on specific categories that you're, that you're interested. For example, if you're interested in bike and safety projects or parks projects, it's very easy to, um, work, uh, to get through the documents. It's actually, um, the city has done a very nice job with this document. Um, I, I've obviously populated it, but I did not create it. It's something that the city, I believe it started last year, Carrie, where you used a Newbury software. And it's, it's really very usable document, very, very, um, easy to go through. So anyway, so that's the, the main document that we'll be using as a, as a background. But, um, obviously, you know, that is in your agenda packet, and so if you have any specific questions on a particular project, we can, uh, we can refer to specific pages on that document. Okay. So go ahead, these, huh, these are the fiscal year 2021, 22 proposed projects. As I mentioned, I'm not going to go through the full five-year program. We're really going to focus on the first year of the CIP, which is 2122. And so for these, I'm just going to highlight some of these projects. If you look at the top three projects under bikes, pedestrians, and safety projects, um, the city actually received a, what's called a quick strike grant. Uh, so that's really exciting for us because that first project, the city was not actually able to do. It went out to bid, and then it could not actually award the bid because we didn't have enough money to do it. Uh, what happened was the bids came out too high, just didn't have enough funding for us, so the project sat. And so now we have an opportunity to do this with, that's what the Q S, meaning a quick strike program. And so, excuse me, quick strike grant. And so, um, so we're very fortunate to get that, so this project is back on in the CIP, and we'll be able to conduct that project. For the paving projects, I just wanted to highlight one specifically, which is the Bodega Avenue Bike Lanes and Pavement Rehabilitation Project. That project's been in the works for a number of years, and the city actually has, um, what's called an O-BAG two grant for that project. However, uh, the, the city only received about half of what it requested. And so, um, we're doing the design, uh, right now for the full stretch, which is Bodega Avenue from North High Street all the way to Pleasant Hill Drive. Um, however, as I mentioned, we only have about half the project, and so we're going to be going back to council in, uh, on July 20th, uh, to talk about a phasing strategy because we've got to obviously match the project with the available funding. And so we'll likely have to do the project in two phases, with phase one being, um, start, the construction to start sometime next year. So what's in the CIP project is actually the whole project. However, we don't have enough money to it, so we'll probably have to come back and revise the CIP to make it match the available funding. The Parkase Street Slurry Seal Design Project, you'll see, um, in the subsequent slides that we're also, the city's going to be upgrading some water and sewer lines on Parkase Street. Uh, those sewer lines and water lines are actually leaking, and they, um, and so those lines are going to be repaired, and once they get repaired, obviously the, the street gets a, a little bit in disrepair, disrepair because of that, and so they're going to come back and do a slurry seal, so that's what that project is about. So, um, next slide, please. Oh, I guess I should have asked if there are any questions on the bikes and street projects before I move on. Are there any questions on any of those projects before I move on to the next slide? Okay, yes?
Um, yeah, I just had a question about, um, I guess the extent of the, um, 511 and 516 on Bodega Avenue, with an understanding that it's probably going to be a phased approach. I was just kind of wondering what, um, the justification was to have Pleasant Hill as the western boundary, especially when considering, um, there's a lot of improvements sort of on the western side of that, with, not to get too ahead, but just, you know, with the Tascadaro Creek to
Right.
um, Regal, and then the improvements on Regal, there's sort of this wedge of Bodega Avenue between uh, Regal and Pleasant Hill that, uh, you know, it's pretty fine in terms of paving, but there's also not bike lanes there. So I was just wondering why, why that wasn't included in the Bodega Avenue stretch?
You know, I wasn't here when the project was first identified in terms of the project limits, but I suspect it had to do with what they assumed they can get, um, a grant for. Um, so a lot of times, I think they were trying to go for two and a half million dollar grant. And so I think that was sort of the, the natural cutoff based on what the available funding was and what they could do. There are other projects for bicycle, um, bike lane projects. This was, is a bike lane project, but it's also mainly a pavement rehabilitation of Bodega Avenues. But I think it had, had to do probably with the initial grant application being about two and a half million dollars. And then, of course, they only got half of that.
All right, and I believe part of it, the, the O-BAG, as Tony referred to it as One Bay Area, it's a A-BAG grant, A-BAG MTC grant. One of the criteria that they look at in terms of competitiveness for grants is, is it within a priority development area? And the city does have a priority development area, it doesn't extend that far west. Um, it, it has a significant portion of Bodega, but it doesn't go that far west. So I don't look at it exactly, but I suspect that's part, part of, um, the other part of why it included the part that would make it competitive for the grant, um, so that we could get it as opposed to another community.
Okay, thank you. Um, just to follow up on that, is there, um, is there a plan to have a bike lane go past Pleasant Hill on Bodega? I don't recall seeing that in the bike project.
There's a project called Regal Road West Side Bicycles and Pedestrian Access Project.
Yeah, and that's really the north-south, uh, along Regal, the, the north-south section that connects from a by covert lane and, and the mall station down.
Oh, and there's also a Bodega Avenue bicycle connection from Regal Road to Tascadaro Creek, that's another project.
Right, and so, yeah, so that's that western section, Tascadaro Creek is basically the western boundary of the city.
But it sounds like you still have a gap between Regal Road and Pleasant Hill.
Regal Road and Pleasant Hill.
Right.
If we go to Regal, if we go Regal to Tascadaro Creek and, you know, up Bodega to Pleasant Hill, then we still have a gap between Pleasant Hill and Regal Road.
Yeah, that's, that's western section that Luke was asking about. Chair Fritz, is that what you're?
Well, yeah, but then you just said that there's, there is a project that goes from Regal Road to Tascadaro Creek, but then again, there'd still be a gap from Pleasant Hill to Regal Road, it sounds like that does not have a bike lane project proposed at this time. What seems like a?
Not, not at this time, I think it is certainly, obviously, the, having a cut, one of original plan policies is to have an interconnected network, and so, um, you know, you can do, just snap your fingers and have bicycle lanes everywhere. So there is a sense of, okay, what do you do first? And if you're, you know, this, the Bodega Avenue, uh, project that's on the current CIP is working its way out from downtown west. Um, we do know Regal Park, um, because of its, you know, use as a park, um, the connection there is also important. But yes, certainly looking at things further, and I, I will note, um, the city is, uh, by looking at updating its bicycle and pedestrian master plan, it's, our last plan was done in 2011, and so that had a lot of things that are, have been done in the last few years. If you, as you've seen with the green bicycle lanes and, um, this project and those types of things are included in that. The county is actually going to be updating their plan, I believe, this year. And, and will be participating with that, um, but then we are looking to also update ours, um, since it's about a decade old as well, and that's, um, we've done many of the projects. So yeah, what is that next phase, Chair Fritz, is a good question, what is the next phase of projects?
Thanks.
But that is a good, that is a good point, though, if we have a gap, we should, I mean, even if we put it in the CIP, even if it's further out, it's probably something that we should identify, and so that's something that we'll have to make note in the, in the bicycle master plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Uh, Kathy, you have a question or comment? You're muted.
So this section that we're looking here, Bodega Avenue Bike Lanes and Pavement Rehab, one is for the design, and then again, it's for the rehab of, for the project itself. Is that correct? And then also, I'm wondering, so this section is, um, east of Pleasant Hill, so this is along the cemetery down to Robinson Road? Okay.
Correct.
And so both, both phases are funded for this year?
That's correct, uh, we, uh, the design was actually approved first, it was approved last fiscal year. And, you know, because we had to get the design started first, and then that project, the one that says 74.02 is the actual construction work, and that's actually not going to, the funding isn't going to be coming until 2022.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Everett, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, so, um, you mentioned that we, that there's some funding, but not complete funding. Uh, so what are you considering proposing to council as far as what, how the phases should, should move forward?
Well, what we're doing is we're trying to obviously optimize the grant funding that we have. We want to use as much of the 1.2 million as possible, but not use other local funds because, uh, obviously the city has very limited funds for the rest of the project. It's short, about roughly a million and a half dollars. And so, uh, we're looking at either starting from North High Street and move westward, or start on Pleasant Hill and moving eastward. And so we'll be discussing with council the advantages and disadvantages of starting on one end versus the other. And we're going to be, um, making a recommendation to council as to what makes sense from a timing standpoint, because the problem with this, um, with this grant is it has a schedule constraint on it. We actually have to have the design completed, and it has to get through Caltrans, even though there is no Caltrans right away. Caltrans administers the, the transportation grant project, we have to get through them, and then, uh, go to bid and construction in 2022. So it's, it's actually kind of a tall order, and so, uh, we're going to be discussing with council what is the best, um, option in terms of phasing it to get through the Caltrans process and to maximize the 1.2 million dollar grant. And so it's either going to, um, it'll either start on the North High Street side, or it's going to start on the Pleasant Hill side, and we'll stop somewhere in between, uh, depending on how much money we have available. It's not exactly the halfway point, but we're looking at possibly going from, uh, North High Street to Nelson Lane, or is it Nelson Road? Yeah, or Nelson Road to Pleasant Hill Road.
And is it generally that the, the project is looked at as a whole, as, as the sum of what it's going to cost, and then some of it is funded or not? Or is it like, for example, the bike lanes, those are funded, but, but other parts of it are not? I mean, what, how does that work?
Yeah, it's actually going to be, um, it's going to be segmented, so whatever that segment is, it's going to be, fully constructed with the bike lanes and the road rehab. So in other words, we're not going to do bike lanes on the whole stretch, but not do the road. We, we actually do, you're looking at the whole project, um, and then you're basically just cutting it at a certain segment, saying, hey, we're going to do all the improvements on that segment.
So. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and then we'll do the next phase of it. Uh, we're, we're looking to apply for, uh, um, an O-BAG three grant next year, and we think that we have a pretty good shot at that next year. And we're really excited about the infrastructure bill because we know that there's going to be additional monies coming from that as well.
Um, yeah, the reason I just had that question is, for example, the bike lanes, I know that the funding that's provided, um, bike lanes have to be put on there. I'm not sure exactly how that works, and the reason I'm asking is that, um, I've seen quite a few comments from, um, either bike riders and/or bike shop owners indicating that, um, that that's going to be a difficult bike lane to use, and bikers are not necessarily going to ride down that Bodega Avenue, I wouldn't, uh, even with bike lanes. And so I'm just wondering if it's something that it's going to be done anyway because of the funding, or is it that it's more that's been decided and the city's going to, uh, fund it to have those lanes there? Am I making?
Uh, I believe, um, Carrie, you could, uh, Carrie knows more about this than I do, but the bicycle master plan identifies Bodega Avenue, doesn't it? And so in order?
Yeah, and actually, I just, I had actually just pulled that out, Tony, uh, regarding the question of, of Regal, the, uh, the western boundary to Tascadaro Creek, to reference that. And, um, we do have, um, for most of Bodega Avenue to Regal, um, so basically from, uh, Parkside School out to Regal, uh, is specified to be a class two bicycle lane, and so that would be part of this project. And then actually, um, between Regal and Tascadaro Creek, it's actually supposed to be a class one. And I, and I suspect, although I was around in 2011 when it was developed, I suspect that's because we do have that much larger green lawn area on the south side of Bodega, as we have that opportunity to have an actual, you know, especially on, um, coming into town, um, the ability to do an actual off-road, um, class one path.
So is, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I, um, I understood the question, was your question that, because we don't have enough money, do we actually have to do the bike lanes? And shouldn't we just use the money for, say, the road rehab part of it?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
That's the question, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, because, because of the restrictions, because the project actually described the bike lanes, uh, the city is pretty much committed to doing the bike lanes in order to accept grant because that was part of the, you know, the grant stipulation.
Right, and, and the city itself has made a strong commitment to what's called the complete streets, and not just doing vehicle infrastructure, but doing the bicycle and the pedestrian infrastructure. And, um, as many of you know, there are also a couple of sidewalk gaps, um, where there just isn't a sidewalk, uh, on the north side of town, uh, north side of Bodega, and, and so those will also be part of that. And, and so those will also be part of that. And that helps with safety up to school. And it obviously helps with pedestrian connectivity as well.
Thank you.
Did you have another question, Luke, or I see your hand.
I just wanted to, um, follow up and say, say thank you, Tony, for, um, thinking of it, just including that, that stretch. I think it is important for. Um, circulation, uh, and, yeah, just having that in there. I just wanted to clarify as well. Um, I looked up the MTC. Um, the priority development area, and it doesn't cover the entirety of that stretch of Bodega, um, between, um, Regal and Pleasant Hill. But it does cover sort of the eastern portion of that, um, down to West Hill Circle. Um, so I'm not sure if that would factor in. But I just think that having that, um, as part of whether it's tied into the, uh, Atascadero to Regal improvement. Whether it's tied into the funding for Regal, um, even if just for the design of it, to be able to have it in the pipeline for a bag later, I think that would be really helpful. And I also just want to put in context. X two that, as I live on my side and talking, talking to people just about, um, what's, what's happening with, with Bodega. A lot of people are concerned that. Once it's repaved, um, if there aren't bike lanes, not just for people being able to ride their bikes, but in terms of traffic calming. Cause it's kind of like, once you, once you hit the light at Pleasant Hill, people go as fast as seventy five miles per hour down that hill sometimes. Um, and really just having that as traffic calming, I think is important for, um, that circulation, uh, portion of the general plan. So thank you.
Any other questions on the pedestrian and bicycle and paving?
We can move on.
All right. So, uh, these next set of, uh, proposed projects on the CDBG projects. Um, we have two in there, but the youth annex ADA upgrades, uh, was actually a project that was approved last year. And we still haven't gotten it off the ground because we're still working with the CDC, the Community Development Commission. On trying to get our funding agreement. And so anyways, so we, we can't really start any work until they, they draft that up. Do their environmental work, and then we can start going on that. But we hope to get, um, that, that work started sometime this year. In, in terms of first, we have to do the design and then we'll probably do the construction. But it's not, it's not a large project. But it's something that we think we can get done within this next year. Uh, the second project is actually the City Hall ADA upgrades project. And, and right now we submitted a, um, a grant for that. And, uh, Carrie knows more about this one because I know she sat in on the meeting, um, when they actually looked at these, um, projects to be awarded. And so we're hoping to get this, uh, this grant awarded to the city, but we'll know probably later on this month, Carrie.
We actually did have, um, it's called this, uh, the CDC has a cities and towns advisory board. So everyone, all the smaller cities and towns that live in Petaluma and Santa Rosa are, uh, and. All the smaller cities and unimperated county can pool the grant awards for community development block grant projects. Um, and I will say that Sabstow is actually getting more than the per capita allocation, which is fine with me. Cause we have, I think we have very good projects that we're using them for. Um, we did get a partial award. Um, I believe we got fifty thousand dollars. I believe you were asking for, I forget what the, what the ask was. It was seventy or eighty thousand, but, uh, we did get fifty thousand, um, awarded, um, at the end of June, uh, is when we did those awards. So we will be able to move forward. And, and you may have seen for the City Hall ADA, the, you know, the path of travel at the, from the sidewalk. There's a new sidewalk, um, a few years ago that was put in. Um, the, the restrooms have been upgraded to the ADA. But there are still other areas in the building that need, uh, need, uh, ADA upgrades. Uh, the city does have an overall ADA transition plan that went through all city facilities. Um, and identified, uh, where ADA upgrades are, are, are needed. And, um, prior to these two, the, the ice pool restrooms were, um, were, have been completed through this, this program.
And for the, the parks projects, there's a number of these. Most of these are actually from prior years. And so you may have seen these from prior years and they're, they're back on because we're, um, getting ready to, uh, to do either. Um, move forward with the design or with the construction. Uh, the one project that is new is the Ice Pool Exterior Shower Design. And see that at zero four one seven ninety six. That's the project number. And that actually was moved up a year at the request of the budget subcommittee, the subcommittee, and the council approved that. And so that is something that we're looking to do the design this fiscal year.
All right. And one note, uh, for the commission on that, because I know the commission had some questions about that and was definitely prioritizing other things. Um, uh, the, the, uh, the council approved that. They also approved funding the design with the general plan, not with the parks budget. Um, so, uh, that isn't coming out of the park, uh, improvement fund that I know. Um, we always look at each spring, um, as part of, uh, my budget recommendations to the, to the council. Uh, on behalf of the planning commission, as their perks, commission hat on, um, all of the other projects. Which the, um, planning commission had recommended are, uh, remained on the list. And nothing came off and got swapped out as part of that. Um, the, the council just decided, um, that that was an important project. It, it is not only for. Um, for pool users, but for the general public, um, as well. And so, uh, one of the other things that, um, Tony, I've been working on is, okay, so how, how, how can we fund this as a grant pending available? We actually have heard that it will be eligible for the CBG, um, program. Um, so our intent is, once the design is done, to apply for a grant, um, for the CDBG, um, for that, uh, exterior shower. Um, again, always conscious of the, the city's part budget and, um, that, those fluctuations. Um, and I, I know most of these are also probably familiar since, uh, we reviewed these in March or April with the commission. But if you have any questions about the, um, updates on where these are at, uh, happy to answer. Any questions?
It's like Everett has a question. Go ahead, Everett.
Yeah, um, so for example, the Americor Trail Extension, um, is there any. A consideration to then, uh, maintain the trail? I mean, is that just get put on public works or is there?
It does get put on public works every time, uh, the city buys, makes a new park, does a park improvement. Um, it is, uh, it is then, yes, general, most grants, I will say, uh, like the, the grant, the matching grant we have. For the Americor Trail from Ag and Open Space, uh, but most grants, um, are for new construction. That would be Park, um, playground replacement and the eyes, park pathway replacement. Um, those are, those are eligible for grants because it's a full replacement and not just to maintain an existing facility. So that, that's great for those. Um, that's a state grant program, uh, we apply to. Um, but yes, it will fall on public works. Um, I will say the one, um, park funding mechanism that is fairly new. Is the measure M that was passed by voters a couple of years ago, uh, which is the, um, I believe it's a half cent sales tax. Uh, countywide. And that is one of the few measures that does allow, um, for maintenance. Of, of projects. Um, we are using, uh, measure M partially for maintenance, but also for, um, new projects as well. So we're balancing that, that fund out.
And the, uh, the, the shower, I, I just, so the design of it is eighteen thousand, but the whole total looks, uh, cost of it. Hundred and seventy two thousand, I believe. I'm just wondering why.
I don't recall what it was. I think it was seventy thousand.
Oh, it's hundred and seventy two thousand, according to the.
I'm gonna let Tony answer that question, because that, that was part of the process that Tony and I went through was, uh, trying to put more accurate numbers to some of these. Obviously, once we know the design, um, and part of that is the, the, the utility, obviously you need water there. You need drainage, um, sewer for that as well. So.
Yeah.
Tony, I don't know if you have details?
I, I do. And I'm just noticing that it's, it's actually, it's, uh, seventy seven thousand. And I noticed that there's something out in twenty twenty five, twenty six. I think that was accidental. It was being pushed out in twenty twenty five, twenty six. But when the project design got moved closer to twenty twenty one, twenty two, we moved, um, the, the construction to twenty twenty two, twenty three. And, uh, that was my error. I did not delete the, um, the costs in twenty twenty five, twenty six. It's not two showers, it's just the one.
Okay.
So thank you for bringing that up. I'll make sure I get that corrected.
Okay. And in the, um, I'm sorry, in the grant that you were going to apply for, wh- what was that? Um, what is that for? Or how, I'm just wondering, like, what is that grant, uh, used for? And just so I know, could it be used for other things?
Sure. So if you're looking at the slides, it's the community development block grant.
Okay.
Funding. Uh, so it's the same thing that we, the ADA upgrades, um, and, uh, it's, it's more facilities. You can't actually use CBD for park stuff. You can use it for facilities, um. And that's, that's why it will, that we, we had some questions because it's an extra shower. Is it considered a facility? Is it considered a park amenity? Um, we've not got clarification that it would qualify for that grant. And so that is, uh, I think what, um, what we're, and we've talked with the city manager. Um, administration about this as well. And they, uh, I think are fine with, um, that being a, a potential option. And Tony, I think, I, I don't know if we mentioned that to council too, um, as a possible funding mechanism, or if we knew that at that time.
You mean the CDBG?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the time, we, we didn't know what it was going to be. We, I think, um, right now, if you, if you, uh, in the budget, it's identified as unfunded.
And that's why. And obviously, if we didn't get this grant, it would still be unfunded.
Right, right.
And you mentioned it was for, um, for Ives Park use, but also for general public. So is, is it going to be. Outside the Ives Pool Area outside of the fencing?
Yeah, so that's part of the design, working with the pool. So the pool and pass is actually our offered showers to, uh, homeless folks. And people who need that, uh, with tokens. And they want to be able to do something like that as well with this exterior shower. Um, so part of the design will be making sure it's secure when it, you know, when they're not operating it. Um, but also in a way that, you know, the functions, um, for the general public, not just, um, pool users.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You have a question, Luke?
Yes, um, more procedural, um, but there was a, a section in between the CDBG projects and the parks projects, um, on housing projects. And I saw that there, there was nothing listed. Um, and I guess this, this is just more, more of a procedural, procedural question about if there, um, is a possibility to. Incorporate any potential, um, projects that may come forward into the CIP, or, you know, if that would happen annually, or, or if that would happen in five years.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, our perks, our housing projects in the past, um, you know, obviously the bigger project that the city has been working on. Um, since the purchase of Park Village has been Park Village projects. Um, the reason there's nothing on the, on the housing projects this year. Is because we are actually completing, and it's actually underway. So I don't know if it, uh, if it shows up somewhere else. But, uh, we're completing a, um, renovation of, uh, what was two, one bedroom apartments. And two sort of camping rooms, when it used to be a, a park, um, with, with a campground. Um, into two, two bedroom apartments. Um, that's, um, if you're, if you're walking through, through Park Village, that's, right now, it's, it's already been elevated. Above the flood plain, but it's, um, a yellow structure, um, and it's under construction right now. So that's a significant rehabilitation. I'm, I'm not quite sure when those, um, when that construction is anticipated to be done. And then the other, um, so that's where the, a lot of the city's money for housing projects, um, that we have has gone. Um, today, that and some of the other, you know, there's, um, out at Park Village, um, West County Community Services applied for grant with us. And, um, I believe we also supported the, um, the case management kind of community center, uh, trailer that they have out there. And that was, I think, well, that wasn't done since I was here. So it was about, because I went to the ribbon cutting. So that was probably two years ago. Uh, one and a half years ago with that, um, open to the public. Um, and then, uh, I did apply for a heat homeless emergency action, uh, program grant for two RB pads. Um, at Park Village as well. Um, those are, were completed, um, a couple of months ago. So they're not showing up in this category. So right now, we actually just completed or are completing a number of projects in the housing category, Luke. We are, we do have a housing, uh, two different housing funds. One is the in lieu housing fund, which is where. Um, when someone does a subdivision, if they, they are required to do the housing units onsite, like the, the, uh, Borough Town Homes Project. Um, they, so for instance, that project owed us one point seven affordable, uh, uh, units. And they have the option of either paying an in lieu fee for that point seven or building the second unit. I always try to convince them to build the second unit, which in this case the Borough Town Homes are doing. And so they're giving us two units. Uh, because the in lieu fee is never enough to actually build a unit. Um, uh, so, um, but if they were to. So we do get some funds from that, but mostly require projects to, to build it onsite. Um, and then we also have a, um. Affordable housing impact fee for commercial industrial projects. Um, but I think the total between both of those stands. Um, somewhere around, um, three hundred, two, two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. I'm not quite sure, Luke, but I can certainly give you the balance for that. So it's not enough to support a full, you know, do a full housing development project. It is, uh, a little bit of leverage, as we talked about, um, in our spring lecture series. You know, what can the city do to help, um, help do some of these housing projects? But any future housing projects like those, um, those showed up in this category in the past and similar projects would in the future as well.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers a lot of questions. Um, I, I guess I was mostly just asking, like, if there was going to be sort of a capital improvement related thing. Um, with, with the housing development, I guess, I mean, and I think it's reflected a lot in other documents that there, you know, like pedestrian improvements that are. You know, near proposed developments or, or, you know, existing ones that, that aren't necessarily tied to the project itself, but, um, kind of embedded elsewhere in the document. So, um, I, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll move on to parks, um, questions. Um, I may, I'm primarily just wondering about, um, trees. And the replacement of trees, both in city parks, um, and, uh, the street trees as well, um, and just sort of, um, what the city's process. Uh, looks like for, um, you know, where is there, is there some sort of a list for areas where they're trying to target street trees or park trees? Or, um, just any other details, um, on, on that plan?
Sure, I can address that. So, um, I'll start with the street trees. So, um, for street and non-park trees. So those can't, those don't come from our park, uh, park improvement fund, um, or the major perks for all fund, because they're not in parks. So, uh, but the city, when we have, uh, we do have a tree removal permit process for heritage trees. Um, trees that are larger trees of a certain size that go through the DRB, uh, designer review board, tree board process. Um, or if it's a single family home, our city arborist and staff, uh, review it. Uh, we require people to plant two trees for every tree that is, is removed. Um, if they can't do that or aren't interested in doing that on their site. Um, they pay an in lieu fee to the city and we use that fund to plant trees elsewhere. So we use those for this, that's where, oh, most of our funding for street trees comes from. Um, in terms of the, uh, locations, so right now, the, uh, we do have a plan in place. We recently changed, um, uh, we have been changing out on Main Street. Um, the pear trees, which are very gangly kind of looking, um, and aren't doing terribly well for the crape myrtle trees. And so we've done a couple of sections of that. And, um, actually, we were waiting for, um, the, uh, some of the ADA upgrades. And the Caltrans work to be completed to be able to move that project forward and, and continue south. Um, by the city parking lot, uh, at, near the hot log and post office and those type. That, so that's the focus for the street treats right now. Um, and so that's what that, we anticipate that four thousand dollar budget, uh, to be used for, um, for city parks. Um, we do have our city arborist, um, review perks, um, or, and, and certainly Dante's maintenance staff, perks maintenance staff. Um, looks at where there are places where, um, we either need trees or there are trees that are not doing so well. If we're not doing so well, we have the city arborists look at it and make sure we're not keeping diseased trees in parks that are going to spread to other trees. Or something's end of life or a danger that we're removing it. Uh, we have done significant tree work out at Burbank Farms recently. They had a number of trees that needed, um, vegetation maintenance. And so that's where it was last year's plan. Now, I believe there's still a little bit more work that needs to be done there. So, um, I think that'll be some of the focus for that. I know there's also a desire at Ives Park in the playground area to get a tree planted, uh, where one was previously removed. Um, turn right at that corner where the ADA, um, uh, parking space on the art center parking lot is and that, that entry. Um, into the park at the playground. Um, and so I know Dante has that one on his. And so I know Dante has that one on his list as well. And I believe that's also part of the park master plan. And so, yes, that, that park, that's the only park that has a master plan. Um, but we do certainly look at um uh other parks as well. And if anyone from the commission has a suggestion of, hey, we could use some trees, you know, there's a lack of shade in this park or something like that, I would be more than happy to, to hear their suggestions on that.
That would now be an appropriate time to mention some of this, or should I wait until comment at the end?
Uh, now is fine with me. I got a pen.
Great. Um, I was, I was just going to add, um, I had been kind of looking for a while to see if there was any sort of measurement of um what the, the canopy was looking like citywide, and I did find a tool by American Forests um that was looking, it's called the, it's treeequitiescore.org. Um. It, it, I mean, it looks at Kennedy canopy cover using satellite data, so it's somewhat imperfect, but it did sort of confirm my understanding that the fewest trees are sort of in the northwest quadrant of the city. Um, measurably, sort of everything northwest of Valentine and Zimfer. Um, and I think that for street trees, that would be a great area to look at. Um, just from my experience of going to Brookhaven Middle School and doing that walk to Regal Park, like, and there's absolutely no trees on Valentine. There's no trees on Zimfer. There's very few trees on Pleasant Hill North. Um, so I think all of those sort of arterials, just in terms of making it a more pleasant pedestrian and bicycle experience, um would all be good to look at. Um, and also on that map, um downtown showed up as having pretty low tree cover as well. So I think the uh the, the, the main street uh effort um in swapping out those pear trees is definitely a good effort. Um, and I also think that Railroad Forest um as a recent acquisition will be an asset for being a place um that is full of trees that's adjacent to downtown in the years to come. Um. So just the last thing I'll say, I guess, in terms of city parks, um would be the importance of flagging um Libby Park um for some continued consideration for trees. Um, just in consideration of uh the fact that many of the heritage trees on that site were lost in some of the storms a couple of years ago. I think it was twenty, early twenty nineteen, if not twenty eighteen. Um, and there has been some replacement um in recent years, um but just continuing to look at that, I think would be helpful.
Alright, thank you, Luke.
And to follow up on, on tree ideas, I don't know if there's a plan for this or not, but Sebastian Paul Avenue coming in from the east is pretty grim in terms of lack of trees. There's, there's barely a tree, you know, that whole stretch from Morris to uh to Pedaluma Avenue. So that would go a long way, I think, to help improving that corridor.
Okay, and that's one that is because it's Caltrans right away, but we can certainly talk to the liaison and, and we have with them about that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions on the park projects or CDBG projects? Tony, I will turn it back for you for all the water and, water and water projects.
Okay, I, I did want to just make a comment on one thing that um Luke had mentioned. I think you asked a procedural question as to, we didn't have any housing projects. What if a housing project comes up? What's the process for adding it to the CIP? It's actually pretty simple. Uh, the one thing that I did want to mention is, even though this is a, a document that, that council adopted, um, it is a living document because costs do get updated all the time. Uh, sometimes there's an opportunity for grants that come up, and so we can put them into the project. Um, unless, if it's on the, something that's being proposed for twenty-one, twenty-two, we'd have to go back to council to add on a project. However, if it's on a, for a future year, we take note of it. And, and when we go through the budget process next year in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we would add it at that time. So I did want to mention that if you have any suggestions and comments for, for projects for the future, um really, the time is now to bring them up because sometimes we, we have to put them, you know, we have to sort of prioritize these projects and try to find funding for it. And so the sooner we know about these projects, um, it just makes it a little bit easier for us to, to move forward and uh get some, some better information on it. So I did want to, want to comment on that. Okay, so. So the, these are the last categories of projects. Um, stormwater wastewater and water projects. The Calder uh Creek Storm Drain and Outfall Project is, is the only one storm drain project that we have this year. And it's really for conducting design and environmental activities in year one of the capital improvement program. Anytime we do anything out in the creeks, it takes quite a bit of time because of the environmental um uh review that we have to do. And so um and that design and the environmental activities will continue actually into year two. So that's kind of an ongoing thing, but it is um a very important project for the city because it does back up and there needs to be maintenance and repair work. Uh, it needs to be done and that's scheduled for, for year three. I think that's one of the, one of the um storm drain systems that gives a public work superintendent uh nights, sleepless nights during the winter, I think. So that's something that we, he's really focused on trying to get moving on. Uh, the other pro, the other projects, Zimfer Creeks or relocations, you can see there's a number of them. Uh, we've had a um actually a sewer line um pipe assessment that was done where they actually go in, they TV the lines, they see what the condition of the pipe is. And so we can see that there, uh, there's quite a bit of, of damage and disrepair, and so we need to get these um um sewer line uh projects um done so that there isn't some kind of a, a major environmental, you know, uh, impact by having a, you know, a sewer line uh rupture or anything, or things like that nature, or even just leak. Because when they leak, obviously, they'll find their way out to the ground and then out into the waterways. And so those are really important uh for us to take care of as well. So uh unfortunately, they take a lot of money. And um, you know, the only way to pay for these things are really through uh sewer rates. And so it's, it's, it's pretty difficult to, to get these projects through. So again, we're hoping that there's some opportunities for some um maybe not necessarily grant funds, but um uh loan programs with the state that's going to come up as part of the infrastructure bill as well. And then the rest, I think there's some water main replacement projects, the same thing. We, there's some uh water lines that are leaking, and obviously during a town, at times of drought, this is not the time for these lines to be leaking. So we're trying to get, get these taken care of so that um we can button up a, a lot of these projects. The first street water main is is under design right now. We're hoping to get into construction next year. And uh the last three projects, the arts projects, those are not new. Uh, those were projects from prior years, but um they're kind of ongoing projects in twenty-one, twenty-two, so that's why they're listed.
Right, and actually, the third one on there is, is the, is the intent to do a third call. Um, as many of you probably know, the Ned Con um uh Spire was the first uh public art commission that, uh, that the RFP that the city released, um, I think it was twenty sixteen. Um, and that got into a Caltrans Quagmire, but it has now been relocated to be um uh where along the Mercredi Trail in approximately the same location. Um, but that project is now moving forward. Um, there uh is uh some geotech um uh soils work that uh that needs to do in terms of making sure the foundation uh for the structure is right. And then uh we moved pretty quickly after that into, I, I anticipate into construction. Uh, the Michael McGinnis uh Gray Matters, which is the art piece that'll be on the uh south side of the library while facing Bodega. Um, that is um being fabricated right now. I saw the pieces um or pictures of the pieces that had been cut, they're being assembled. Um, and we anticipate that will be installed uh in a couple of months' time. And then uh the Public Art Committee is discussing a site um for a, a next commission. Um, and so the, it's in the CIP for this year for doing the, the call for selecting the, we'll be selecting the site. Once that's selected, there's no cost involved. Um, once the site is selected, um developing a call for the artists, and uh we do have a small budget in the CIP for um advertising and getting the word out, um and also um for honorariums, there's usually a thousand dollar honorarium for the finalists to do models of their art piece and present to the public. Um, so we are anticipating that this year with next year being the um, the actual um commission uh piece in that budget. Alright, so that is a busy year of public uh capital improvement projects. Um, are there any questions on the stormwater and water projects or our projects?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about um the new art, um and just sort of what um the scope of this, this funding could, could cover. If I, I'm just, I guess I'm just wondering if it would, um, you know, there's kind of like two large projects there. I don't know if the third one necessarily would, would have to be a large project, or if it were to go to you know, smaller projects with, you know, community organizations putting, you know, knitting on light poles and murals or things like that, just if, if it could go to more of a public art fund. Um, if, if that would be an alternative, or if it's sort of specifically um thinking about going to a larger project.
So, yeah, and actually, that, that actually brings up a really good point, Luke. There is, um, so the capital improvement plan is um usually for projects that are large enough that a city would consider them to be capitalized. Um, and Tony, I'm not sure. I know you have a threshold, um, or there are some guidelines for thresholds. I don't know if there's a monetary threshold that you have uh range for that.
Uh, yes, and it varies um by city. And some cities that I've worked in, it's, uh, it's five thousand is, is threshold, and in other cities, it's ten thousand. So, uh, it, it, it's a, it's a policy matter.
Right, and so one thing I will say, Luke, that doesn't appear on these projects are the smaller projects that you're talking about. So um like the Black Lives Matter mural that was um done in the plaza. Um, that isn't part of the CIP, but it was still done with the Public Art Fund. Um, the, and, and for this year, the council did also approve in the regular budget, um, but not in the capital improvement because, because of the size and scale of it, I think it was thirty-five hundred dollars um from the Public Art Fund to do an upcycle art project that is a collaboration between the Zero Waste um Subcommittee and the um the Climate Action Committee and probably the Public Art Committee as well. Uh, so it'll be sort of a, a multi um multi-committee project. So that was also, so that's more of a community art project. Um, and we did have um our, our public art committee didn't um do the coordination, but we talked about, and the, I believe it's Art Smart. I forget the, I forget the name of the organization helped uh and coordinated painting the bollards of the parklets last year, a sort of a community art project with youth. Um, so yes, there are definitely smaller projects that um are being done with the Public Art Fund from time to time. Um, the Public Art Committee has also heard from, you know, Kathy um in terms of the Ives Park mural. Um, that was after this um the CIP was submitted, um but that is certainly a possibility in terms of a future art project. Um, that's probably big enough that it would be included in the CIP. Um, if, given the costs, if, if it's replacement of all the spots, slots and not painting, or if there's a commission for an artist, uh depending on how that's done. Um, and then one other thing actually related to the sewer um that is not on this, a capital improvement plan, but was approved by council last week as well, is a sewer lateral replacement loan fund um of fifty thousand dollars. And so what that is, is that is a loan fund for um if a homeowner has a sewer lateral that bursts um and needs to replace it, um that's available as a, a low-cost loan to be able to support that. Um, and so again, that's not a capital improvement project, but it is a part of the infrastructure in the regular budget that the council approved. And Luke, did I answer your question? So there's a lot of smaller projects that just aren't in the CIP, I guess is what I'm trying to, the gist of it for the, the, but the sponsorship of the new art. Uh, I will say that I, I had a retreat with the Public Art Committee a couple of years ago to talk about what their vision for art in the city was. And one of the focus for these bigger commissions is at the gateways into town. And so that's part of what we're discussing for this. Um, so this is meant to be a larger commission, um but doesn't mean other art projects can't happen.
Yes, I think you did certainly answer my question. Thank you.
We can't think of a question? You're muted.
I'm wondering with the Calder Creeks uh storm drain and outfall maintenance includes, where Calder Creek goes under the two highways, one sixteen um up to the railroad forest. Is that what that project is? It wasn't clear. You're muted.
Tony, you're muted. I was going to ask if, if Kathy, if you could uh turn up your volume a little bit. I, I missed your question. I know you were talking about Calder Creek. You had a question on Calder Creek?
Yes, I'm wondering if the storm drain and outfall maintenance includes the pipes that go under highway one sixteen from Ives Park down to the railroad forest. I understand they're quite clogged right now, more than halfway filled up.
Uh, yes, it's it's the set, it's the storm drain system on Calder Creek between uh Ives Park and the storm drain outfall just past Pedaluma, Pedaluma Avenue near the Jodra, Joridota Trail. Yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Alright, anyone else?
I just had a follow-up question on um pavement um with um the Parcat Street um sewer and water line replacements, um if, if any of uh, if it's being repaved at all in this process.
You're talking, yes, that was the one that was on the, of the spray seal on the first set of projects. Oops, there you go.
Oh, okay, that's right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, I think we can move on.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so that is the overview of the capital improvement plan. Obviously, it's um a multi-year plan because these are large projects that take time. Uh, but uh these are the highlights for uh this fiscal year. Uh, and so in terms of the planning commission's role, um as you saw, on the, on the actual CIP, there's a uh description of each project, a justification um of why it's needed. And then there's a general plan, goals and policies that are outlined for each specific um project. Uh, many of these overlap, and so what we've done is we've put them all into um uh a list, so like circulation one point one, ensure that the city's circulation network is a well-connected system of streets, roads, sidewalks, multi-use trails, routes and paths that um effectively accommodate both vehicular and non-vehicular traffic in a manner that considers, considers the context of surrounding land uses and the needs of all roadway users. Long sentence, but it relates to several of the projects that you've seen tonight, um particularly in both the bicycle um and pedestrian with the sidewalk gap closures and Bodega cro, uh crosswalks. Um, and um it, so a lot of these apply to multiple projects. We, instead of going through each page um on its own, we put them all uh here, and I, I don't, you can all read, and I'm sure you've all read this in the staff reports. So I don't know if you want me to go through and read these, or if you want to um have a discussion on them. Um, in terms of any questions you might have, we can go one page at a time. I think it's, this is, I think we have a couple of pages of these. Uh, but these are basically the um, the general plan, goals and policies that support the various projects that we have. Um, the CIR projects are circulation. Um. And so, like I said, they're um connecting um the circulation network, maintaining streets, uh making sure that pedestrian and bicycle networks are safe and expanding and maintaining those. Um, and working on pedestrian crossings as part of new street construction, again, the initial Bodega plan. Um, and making sure that we have uh ADA compatible uh compliant uh infrastructure. So that's the circulation, and maybe we can just go by each kind of element of the general plan and see if anyone has any questions or uh questions, I guess, and we'll take any comments after the public hearing.
Is there anyone have a question about the circulation elements?
Alright, um, and the next is uh the community design section of our general plan, and so that's increasing the presence of art in public spaces. Obviously, that relates to the three art projects we have. Um, and then we have uh the open space, uh and so that looks at uh rehabilitation of waterways. And so the, this, this one in particular, three point three, relates to the uh Calder Creek naturalization uh work uh that we're doing. And then um uh the next one obviously relates to this, both the street trees as well as the park uh trees uh that we have, uh that we're, work that we're doing. well as the park trees that we have, that we're, work that we're doing. Any questions on either of those sections? The next one is community facilities. And so these relate to the, the community development, the ADA block, a community development block grant work that we're doing, as well as implementing the, the master plans, maintaining the infrastructure and expanding where needed. So the sewer and stormwater projects that Tony just discussed, and then ensuring that parks and trails are accessible to various segments of the population. That relates certainly to the Ives Park Pathway Project, as well as some of the connections we're working on for Tamagotchi Park. And then provide support for community, local nonprofits, providing recreation services. So this is particular to these projects. We do have, one of the lingering projects is the resurfacing of the Brookside tennis courts of the school council, some nonprofit, but it's certainly community recreational amenity. And the exterior shower at Ives Pool, they were done at the youth annex and cultural center and the tree work that we're doing at Burbank Farm, as well as the design for the restroom there. We have, one of the goals is to do physical site planning as an effective means of enhancing safety and preventing crime and making sure that they're visible to community and residents. And then the last one for the community facilities is recognizing the values of teen and local youth. And so we do have, again, the project on, the ADA work being done down at the youth annex. Although that, I will say that youth annex serves everybody because as you know, we have a lot of non-use related things, including funding commission, city council meetings down there. Any questions on the community facilities? All right. And so, and then the very last one is maintaining unstructured water flow in the storm draining system. Pretty obvious, but important. All right. And so we are asking that you hold a public hearing, open a public hearing for comment. And then once that is closed, we are recommending that after deliberations, that you adopt resolution, the second resolution for the year, finding that the capital improvement plan for this fiscal year is consistent with the adopted general plan, all of the policies we just outlined. So I will turn it with that, I will turn it over to Chair Fritz.
Thank you. So I will open the public hearing. So if you'd like to make public comments, please raise your actual or virtual hand, and I will call on you and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Kyle, you want to go ahead and mute yourself? And you see the clock there?
Don't see the clock. Give me a second if I can. Yep, now I see it. I got it.
Great, go ahead.
I'd like to ask first about the Bodega Robinson intersection. The CIP description for this project is pedestrian safety improvement, including pedestrian activated beacons, markings and signage. The justification given was the city's safety corridor study that identified improvements at five intersections along Bodega, including these intersection improvements at Robinson. Now, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this study was conducted in 2018. My question is just how this particular choice of improvement aligns with the Fast Pull zoning map update that shows half of the lots adjacent to this intersection as multifamily residential R7. What other, if any, improvements to this intersection were discussed? And what, if any, conversation about the lack of sidewalk on Robinson near this intersection were considered? With unit number minimums as high as we have for R7 multifamily residential, it would seem to me difficult to justify merely providing pedestrian safety improvements on this scale with the understanding of the increase in car volume expected via Robinson to Leland as a result of planned development without providing sidewalks in this area as a consideration. Does this really satisfy circulation elements 1-2, 1-11, 2, or 2-2 with its explicit discussion of incorporating sidewalks? Perhaps outside of the scope of this body, but I'd also appreciate any insight regarding the cost of this project. Perhaps this was addressed in the context of the failed bid process described in the presentation. When proposed as part of the 2019-2020 budget, the cost of this project was allocated at $41,000. Just two years later, this cost has increased by over 35% to $56,000, including new fees for product, project, project management, professional services and pre-designed design that were absent from the 2019-2020 request. Secondly, it's important that the CIP suggests, sorry, it's unfortunate the CIP suggests that the repaving of Bodega is being scaled down as a result of a 1.2 million funding shortfall. Can any additional details be provided to the actual scale down itself? In particular, what considerations will be taken to consider the deterioration and need for replacement aspect of this project as opposed to the shoulder improvements and frontage improvements aspects that I would prefer see offset to future developers for those suggested sites? An issue here for bicyclists is whether repaving of Bodega will be completed. CIP of bicycle lane striping and signs for Bodega were already approved in previous years, but will not be completed until repaving is completed. As bicyclists continue to wait for these lanes to be placed, they continue to jeopardize their own safety in utilizing Bodega without appropriate bike lanes. With that being said, it seems like the preference would be for the replacement to be in the region described by Carrie as the Class II pathway, beginning at Parkside and heading west. There's a, I have a reference to that. There's actually a Sabatskoe bicycle pedestrian plan from November 2011 that makes reference to some of the things that were talked about. And then finally, I'm hoping to hear if there's any details on the Ives Park pathway replacement in particular. Has a path material been decided on or proposed? I spoke at a previous meeting about the benefits of using concrete over other materials such as asphalt in terms of long-term maintenance and cost.
Great. Thank you, Kyle. Anyone else like to make a public comment?
And I do see a couple of other members of the public here tonight.
I don't see any hand raising. So I will close public comments. And Carrie or Tony, do you have any other thoughts or responses to some of Kyle's questions about the Bodega Robinson intersection? And then the other questions about the Bodega, Bodega project he posed?
I can respond to some of the, some of the questions. I hope I captured them all. One is had to do with the cost increase of about 30% since 2018. When the original estimate was done, I wasn't here at the time. I believe W Trans did the traffic study report. And so they estimated costs at that time. After they did that, once we started doing the, the CIP and putting it on the project, we update costs every year, by the way. Construction costs are just going crazy. It's been very, very difficult for, for engineering to keep up with these construction costs because of the fact that, you know, every time there's a fire that occurs and all of a sudden, construction costs go up. And so we've literally had to update costs every six months. That's how, how difficult it's been to keep up with the cost. And that's part of the reason why the, the ADA project couldn't actually be done. I mean, at the time the estimate was done, that was a year earlier. And then all of a sudden, when it goes out to bid, then the, you know, the cost just exploded. And so it's very, very difficult to do that. And so what we tried to do, and I think Carrie alluded to that in the beginning, is that we really tried hard to update a lot of the costs so that going into this year, at least, we have updated costs instead of carrying forward costs that are, say, two or three years old. So I don't know if that answers why it went up 30%, but I just do know that construction costs do increase every year. Sometimes it's because of lack of materials, asphalt, things like that. And that, that also causes construction costs to go up. The other question had to do with some sidewalk gaps. And I do know that on Robinson, Carrie, there's a development that's occurring in those areas. And there's some plans for frontage improvements by those developments.
Right. So we do have a couple of sidewalk gap areas. They are being closed as part of this, this project. So one is near the Humbley Square proposal, which most of you are familiar with, many of you are. They do have a formal application, and that is just beside Golden Ridge Avenue on the north side. And that's where that, sure, the sidewalk ends. And you kind of have the uphill dirt trail that comes back down. They will be installing a retaining wall and the appropriate sidewalk improvements, curb better sidewalk as part of their development. If that project weren't going ahead, the city would have to be paying for that. But that project does look like it's going ahead. And so one way or another, that will get filled at the same time that the improvements here are done. If there's a, if there's a scheduled difference, we'll likely do a development agreement with them to make sure that it gets done in an efficient manner and gets in place, you know, at the same time. So there's not more disruption to each of these blocks. That's the other reason why we do blocks at a time, because this is a pretty disruptive construction process for the neighbors. And we don't want people to have to go through it twice. The other portion of it, I believe, is being closed by this project. I do know that there's a substandard sidewalk just north of Robinson, the proposed development there, the Humbley Square would have to replace the sidewalk to the current standards as well. And that is typical, frontage improvements are required when a property develops or develops for the first time. And I think there was one other question about the, the Ives Park Trail. I would love to have a concrete path, however, it is two to three times the cost of the asphalt. So, and Tony, you may know more about the numbers of if you were to put a concrete pathway through, through a park versus asphalt with the cost differences are in the current budget. I know we're not, we're not anticipating this year to be able to build all of it. We're trying to stretch that dollars as much as we can. But Tony, do you have information on that?
No, I, you know, and I, I understand, I prefer concrete sidewalks myself from a maintenance standpoint, they're going to be a lot better. They are very expensive. And so that's why a lot of cities are going to asphalt. There's actually some that are going to non-asphalt surfaces, more of a, like a crushed rock, but that's not ADA compliant because it's not skid resistant. And so, you know, unfortunately, there aren't too many products out there that can be used. It's also ADA compliant.
And DGA is notoriously, yeah, notorious, notorious for on the maintenance side as well, especially if you're trying to maintain that level surface where, you know, you don't have the puddles and the trip hazards. So.
Exactly. And I think there was a question in there about the one and a half million dollar, you know, scale down of the project. I wasn't exactly sure what the question was, but the reason why was because I think, as I mentioned earlier, the city did ask for a much larger grant. And basically, they weren't able to secure that grant. They were only able to secure half that amount. And so that's really the main reason why we're going to the scaled down version. There's going to be a big discussion before council on July 20th. And I encourage the public to attend that meeting if, if they're, they're very, if they're interested. There's also going to be a discussion on what the design at least will look like, because the design engineer will also be there. And so anyway, so that should be a good meeting if you're, if you're interested in that particular project and the bike lane project, what's, what's it going to look like? And, you know, and the difficulty in that area, of course, is the right of way. You know, when you're trying to fit in a bike lane to meet Caltrans standards, and you have a very fixed right of way, and if you, you know, you know parts of Bodega, you've got some pretty steep hills on there, so you can't cut into the hills. And so you're really boxed in in some areas. And so it's a little bit of a challenge to fit the bike lanes in there. And so, you know, they're, they're doing the best they can in terms of, of trying to fit that in as well as they'll have to minimize some of the, the lane width in there. But again, on July 20th, there'll be a nice discussion with council on that. And I believe that was all the questions I heard. Unless there's anything else, Carrie, that you heard?
That's it.
Great. Thank you. I will then close public comments and bring this back to the commission for further questions or comments. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add or any Go ahead, Luke.
Thank you. I just wanted to give kind of a broad comment about just the capital improvement plan overall, and really just express my appreciation for how thorough this document is. I completely agree with Tony that is a very readable document. I, I think that's hugely important just in terms of conveying what, what the city's priorities are. So I really was just happy to see the level of comprehensiveness and also citywide priority. I think you see pretty much pockets of every part of town represented here in the city's priorities. And I also see a lot of feedback from the planning commission and other bodies, comments that have been made over, over the course of years, really embedded throughout this. So I just really am glad to see that the staff is, the city staff and, and the whole team is, is really considering how to, how to best represent the full city in terms of funding these projects, and really appreciate the, the scope of all of this and priorities in general. So with, with that, I just want to add that I, I hope that there might be some room for incorporation for addressing that gap between, on Bodega, between Pleasant Hill and Regal, not to, not to beat a dead horse on that one. But I'm just thinking about how we might be able to just get that in the CIP, understanding as well that there's, there's not going, it's not going to be all funded at once. And it would probably be, I guess, phase three and might not even fall within the next five years. But I'm just something in there, I think, especially in looking at the, the circulation 1-2 section of the general plan, I think, just making sure that it's really connected and that, you know, all of these assets we're investing in, $9 million for, for that Regal, you know, bike lane improvement. It's, it's incredible that we're doing that after so many decades of talking about that. And I really want that to just be as accessible as possible. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, in particular, the part of CIR 1-2 that jumps out to me in that is considering the context of surrounding land uses and meeting the needs of all roadway users. I think it could, can maybe be easy for some of us who are residents to, you know, think just, okay, well, you know, if there's bike lanes, why don't you just go to Pleasant Hill and then, you know, turn and go to the park and go around Regal. But I think, you know, just thinking about all roadway users and that, you know, there are going to be people who, who don't know this town who are biking through it and, you know, might not know that they're going through a really unsafe stretch of Bodega to get to the amenities that are on the other side. So I just think that's, that's really important to consider. And, and would love to see that somehow. I'm not exactly sure either, I guess, and would like some clarity on if we were to amend this in any way, if it would even be able to go back to, to the city council at this point, or if our, our option is primarily to, you know, accept the general plan consistency to avoid having to do those further readings.
Right. So the commission's role is the general plan consistency items. It isn't to add or subtract or things from the capital improvement plan. However, had that said, certainly the, you know, we as staff, Tony and I are hearing you and as the Bodega Avenue project moves forward, it is, as I said, it is in the Class II portion of that for that stretch is in our bicycle and pedestrian master plan. So we'll certainly be keeping that in mind in terms of the design project moving along.
Excellent. Thank you. And I guess my, my very last question is just, just making sure. So we're, I guess, just with the timing of this, we're not, we're not looking at general plan consistency for the five-year plan. It's just for, for this fiscal year. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Everett, do you have a comment, question?
Yeah. Could you go through the process again, just for public sake, as far as where we go from here? Are there, is the council going to, is there opportunity for public to comment further on any of this? Or is that already passed and kind of where we're at with that?
Sure. So the council already held two different meetings, public sessions, where they took public comment on the CIP, both on the 30th and then again on the 6th, when they, they, so they have actually approved the subject to the commission's findings this evening.
Okay. Yeah, just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or discussion, items or discussion? Seeing none. Would anyone like to make a motion? Kathy?
I move that we approve the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty two. As meeting the goals and policies of the general plan.
A second.
Thank you. Last chance, any further questions or comments about this? Seeing none, I will ask Carrie to take a vote, please.
I will take a vote, and this will approve the resolution that states Kathy moved. Approving the general plan consistency findings for the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Landon Bush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ottinger?
Yes.
And Chair Fritz?
Hi.
All right, that is unanimously passed. Thank you all very much. And thank you all for your wonderful questions. It's, I actually learned a bit about some of the projects I wasn't as familiar with in this process. So I appreciate your very intelligent questions.
Great, thank you, everyone. Thanks for making this easier to understand, Tony. I agree that the report is very clear. It's easy to read and see, you know, what money is going, coming from where and being spent on what. And the projects are pretty well explained. And yeah, it's, it's fairly easy to go through. Appreciate that. All right, our next item on the agenda is subcommittee updates. There are people that would like to update us on any subcommittee activity. Luke, go ahead.
You. So the Climate Action Committee tomorrow will be, once again, evaluating a ban on, on all new gas stations. And expansion of fueling stations within city limits. I also attended the S C T A, R C P A board meeting yesterday where the board also expressed unanimous support of discontinuing permits. For new gas stations and infrastructure as we're also looking at. So just wanted to also update that, that the agency is taking a county-wide look at implementation as well. So that's, that's pretty much the only thing that's on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting. So pretty short update there.
Thanks.
Right. And I have one addition for the Climate Action Subcommittee. Although I can certainly cover it in my planning director's report as well regarding the Civic Spark fellow for that group. And that is that the, the city did, we submitted an application for this. The council passed in their budget funding for this. And this is for a. One person fellow who would actually be hosted at R C P A, but doing work specifically and solely for the city of Sebastopol. Working with the Climate Action Committee and staff to develop a climate action framework. It's about cap, the Climate Action Plan, but light, if you will, but really focused on. Updating the Sebast, for Sebastopol and focusing on actions, more than metrics perhaps. We did, Tanya Narith from R C P and I interviewed with the Civic Spark folks. And we heard last week, I think it was last week, that we did, we're accepted into their program. So we're finalizing that. And that is actually the agreement. So that will be on the next council agenda for approval by council.
Right. Kathy?
Yes, the Ice Park Improvement Subcommittee met with Dante in the park. A while back, and we covered some of the last details that were on our list of improvements that we'd like to see made. And at this point, we're feeling that we have accomplished. A lot of the low hanging fruit, but we've also created a framework for looking at the next level of projects. Some of which would need to be funded through some nonprofit sources or in the future. As improvements get made in the park, such as removing fences when the pavement gets replaced. So we can still begin, you know, we have this information that we've collected and we can still continue to look at it. But I think the next area where we want to start moving is looking at how to fund these improvements. And also how to guarantee some sort of a. Funding mechanism for maintaining the restoration when it occurs in Ives Creek. That seems to me that that is something that will need to be ongoing in order to keep that. That area with the waterway. Really functioning well for its purpose. And I'm not sure whether city staff will be able to do that, given the constraints that they already have. So that was another idea. We also thought that. If we create a funding source, we might be able to get a lot of the nonprofits in the area working together on. Ives Park with the restoration in mind to come up with matching funds for that specific project. And that would take some effort. So it seems like that process should happen either through us or through the community. To make sure we have something in place when the restoration is ready. And I know it could take years, but we should be thinking about that. So some of the things we covered with Dante. And Eric, his assistant, was the, the white curb around the youth playground. Many people. Think it's unsightly and it is damaged right now. And what was constructive was that Dante mentioned that if. The new asphalt paving is high enough, it could act as a curb to the playground to hold the mulch in. And Carrie, I'm not sure how we proceed to find out if that's true or whether we need to.
Um, that's probably a question I can ask the, the designers of it. They would know. I will note that that portion of it probably won't be done this year. Just, you know, given the phasing that we need to do for the project, the budget, but. But if the, you know, I know they need to meet ADA grades, but I certainly think if they, if they are able to raise that. Or if we can excavate out a little bit, you know, on the playground side. So there's a bit of a depth, so that it's, it's higher. That would certainly be ideal instead of having PVC plastic as a barrier in the park.
Yeah, it seems like in. I'm sorry, just, just gonna say, it seems like they could include some kind of detail of the edge. You know, even if the actual paved surface isn't at, you know, the right elevation, they could detail a curb or something.
A curb or something. Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Hold it in place. That would be, yeah, nicer than that.
Yeah, I think Dante was concerned that if it was also black like the asphalt, it might be a tripping hazard. But then dropping into the playground would be a falling hazard as well. So I don't know. Maybe if there are, maybe to say another white strip along the edge. Or maybe some placement of boulders and rocks that match whatever happens in the restored area. Could just indicate to people that they shouldn't fall in there. But, you know, it's something that I think is worth looking at. So thank you for Carrie, if you could follow through and look on that.
Sure.
The other thing that we wanted was lowering the fence at the gate. And we, we're pretty sure that will happen when the pavement gets replaced, but we're not actually sure. But right now, it's not a priority for Public Works. I wanted to make it clear to them what is a priority in my mind. Right now, the other thing we looked at was painting the lamp posts. And I, and I, again, that's not a priority. I think the park is useful and enjoyable without them painted. But I think long term, it'd be something to keep on the list that might be funded if we had estimates. And I think Dante could work on that, but we don't need to look at that now because prices change over time. We also discovered that a lot of the projects are not really workday projects. But. Organizing groups to adopt a specific area is a way that volunteers can help. And then spreading wood chips if and when we have them is a good project for volunteers. So I know that was something that we look, we're talking about. Again, working with local, already existing nonprofits like Brody and Kwanis to. To work on these projects, it could be helpful for them. I know they, Roderick in particular has done a lot of things on the park already. So they may be interested in helping with that. We also were asking about the new trash receptacles that we had heard about before. Those are the new black ones that used to match what was in the downtown area. And there are eleven of them that are already assembled. It's just a matter of putting them in on a concrete pad. So that there isn't a weeding issue around the base of them. And then they are secured as well. So Dante is going to continue putting them up as he can. And I guess our committee will continue to, to look at that and see that it's happening and. See how long that takes. And then the last thing that was very positive was that we heard that the city is looking at new plans for revising. The, the landscape design in their parking areas, parking lots. And that High Street is one of the, besides downtown, is one of the priority locations. And that there won't be as much landscaping, but there will be trees and there will be, I guess, the cobblestones that are set in place to avoid weeds. So at that time, that would be nice to have it replaced, but we can also get the unused signposts removed. And so I just wanted to make sure that Dante was, was aware that that's something on our list. That will probably happen at that time, too. So it looks like a lot of the little things are happening. And I think that since this committee has been formed and we've been working with Dante, he's been able to accomplish some of the things that I felt were. And many of us felt were unsightly and made the park feel like it wasn't valued. And when I walk through there now, I feel like it is valued. And having been to a lot of small towns. In our travels with children, even today without children, we often do stop in small towns parks. And I feel like this park has a lot of value relative to what other people have in their small town parks. And I think we can be, be proud of what we've been able to maintain and, and keep and enjoy. So I don't, you know, feel like we should feel like the park is a disaster since we have a long list of things that need improvement. And I, I think that some of the improvements have already been made. And we will keep watching.
And Kathy, I want to, I want to thank you and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to add to that, just, you know, our appreciation for Dante. He's, he's been very receptive as far as. Working with us and being very, you know, positive about it. You know, kind of collaborating. It was also eye opening to kind of understand the workings of, of Public Works. And I think it's important for the commission as the, the park commission to know. Kind of how they are trying to stay up with just simple park maintenance. You know, they, along with maintenance, they have to deal with graffiti issues, damage issues from over the weekend. I mean, usually they only have a couple of days during the week to handle maintenance. Because on Mondays, you're usually dealing with all the stuff from, you know, the weekends and homeless issues and all those types of things fall on Public Works. And so he, you know, I appreciate that dilemma that he has. And with a number of people that are working on it. And that's why I kind of also asked before about the projects. You know, you add a project, it just seems like, along with the cost of a project, it should also include, okay, how is this going to be maintained? And so they're just trying to kind of keep up. And it's kind of really been difficult for them to do that. And also with right before fireworks, they had to kind of focus on that. So they're always kind of just focusing on certain things. And, you know, sometimes they'll get comments from the public regarding, well, gee, why isn't this cleaned up? Or why isn't this taken care of? And a lot of it is, you know, they're just, they're doing their best, but they're kind of understaffed from that standpoint. One of the things that kind of moving, I'm part of the Zero Waste Committee, but one of the things that kind of jumped out at me is. So we have, you know, throughout the city, we have recycled cans, you know, garbage cans. And which is, okay, great, you know, that we do that. But the reality is that those can, those garbage cans are not being sorted out. Because it gets mixed in with other trash. People, you know, people go through them or they, or they, people just put regular trash in. And so it's not necessarily, the, it's not necessarily ending up where we want it to be as far as recycled materials. So that's something I'm going to bring up to the Zero Waste Committee to see if there's a way to help with that part of it. But just those types of things, they're just having a difficult time just kind of keeping up with the amount of staff and what they're trying to do. And with maintenance and weeds and bark and just, you know, a lot of stuff going on. So anyway. But I just really appreciated Dante's positive attitude with all of that. And, and also Kathy's done a great job interacting with them and getting all this stuff done and moving forward with it. So appreciate her work and efforts on this as well.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. That was part of the receptacles part that I didn't read from my notes. But, you know, and I, I edited my notes to say, should we try to fix this? You know, it's, it's daunting to think of how much work it would take to try to get. Recycling going on in our parks and, you know, out in front of screaming Mimi's. Same situation going, there are multiple containers, but it's all just thrown away. And I guess that's the same on, on Main Street as well. And, you know, we're a city that wishes it could be different. But I don't know how to change, how to change this. I think it's worth trying and talking about it, but.
Yeah. And we also talked about, I know you kind of touched on this, Kathy, about work, workdays, public day. Try to get that going. I think, you know, with people happy to be getting out, it's a good time to kind of identify some of those areas. And figure out, you know, how we might be able to include the public to maybe assist with some of those maintenance things.
Yeah, certainly there are a lot of topics that we can continue thinking about and connecting on. And I will mention that there is room for another person to be on the committee if someone's interested. Wants to join our discussions as we have them. We, Kate from the community, Kate Hug is still communicating with us. Will make, she can. So, but we could take another planning commissioner.
We could volunteer our new planning commissioner.
I, I was thinking of that. Thought that would be very helpful considering what to do next.
All right, thanks. Are there any other subcommittees out there? That was design review, but we haven't, we haven't met recently.
Yeah, Zero Waste, we didn't have a, a meeting was cancelled this month. So we're mainly going to be focusing on the S B thirteen eighty-three, which is the California initiative for zero waste. So I'll be reporting that in the future commission meetings.
Right. We can move on to planning director's report then.
All right, thank you, Chair Fritz. So just a few things. As Vice Chair Ottinger related to, we do have a new planning commissioner, the council-appointed Debbie Burns. She is a longtime business owner in town. She owns somebody on Main Street. And they thought that that was, having a downtown business retail representative would be really helpful in terms of. You know, what's going on in downtown and revitalization measures and those types of things and understanding. So she will be joining us. I have an orientation scheduled for next week. And so she will be joining us at the next meeting on the twenty seventh, which we will be having. We have a temporary use permit scheduled for that meeting. It is a. To the community church on the north side of town, one thousand North Grabenstein Highway, right by the veterinary clinic. It is proposing, they already have a safe parking program. They are proposing to add two shelters. They're, they're actually called Conestoga Huts, but they're basically sleeping quarters as a temporary use to their site. And so that will be a, before you at your next meeting on the twenty seventh. In terms of other upcoming meetings, July twentieth, as we noted, the Civic Spark, that'll be on consensus. It's not a huge issue, since council has already approved funding and a letter of support for that application. It's simply the, the technical agreement that we need authorization for, for staff to move forward with that. That will be on the consent calendar. And then, as Tony had mentioned, discussion on Bodega Avenue, a few other items. The agenda should be out and the package should be out in a day or so. August third. So we did have a housing element RFP out for update. We received two proposals, which is not a huge amount, but they're actually the two I wanted to get. So I'm in the process of reviewing those and anticipate August third, we'll have a word of contract. On the council calendar agenda that night. There will also be, tentatively, there's a discussion item to update the council on the Whitmark project. That's the multi-country project on Bodega at Robinson. And I know a few of you have expressed interest on when is that happening? I will note it's not a public hearing, given the process they are going through, S B thirty-five process, which doesn't have any public hearings. Um, but uh we will be giving a process uh update to to council and any community members who are. Uh, interested in that. Um, other items um of interest to this group, uh, the associate planner recruitment, we did um have a couple of. Possibilities that last time we went out, um, the and a preferred candidate, however, she did end up taking another job elsewhere. Uh, which is unfortunate, so we are re-advertising that, and that is about to close. Um, it sounds like we have a a number of applications. Um, and so uh hopeful for this next round, and hopefully someone's starting soon. Um, in the meantime, obviously, Jeff and Jeff is our day to day planner. Uh, if you call and uh ask a general question. Um, that he's also working on that temporary use currently, I'll see next week. Um, and then Kelly Hickler um from Junior Level Planning is also helping on some of the larger projects like Company Square. And then uh lastly. Um, the, I know the Calder Creek Naturalization Project uh and hydrology study that was on. Um, the uh, the C I P uh list earlier tonight, I am finalizing the agreements for local hydrology study. And the urban uh waterways uh respiration group. Um, to uh do work on that project, so I anticipate we'll probably have. Um, our first meeting um on that in either August, uh, probably late August or early September. Uh, to get that project rolling out in terms of the community visioning on. Um, what the naturalization of that creek could look like. And I think that's it, unless there are any questions uh from members of the commission.
Any questions? Whatever.
Um, I just wanted to uh just let you know. Uh, I will not be able to attend August tenth or September fourteenth due to uh family planned trips.
Okay. Set down, and we will make sure, because I know you, as part of the artist, some committee are certainly interested in that, so that was. Uh, I'll try to work around that with the scheduling. You said August tenth and.
And uh September fourteenth.
Okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Ottinger? Sorry, Vice Chair Ottinger.
Um, you mentioned Woodmark before. What date was that where that was coming forward?
So uh, uh, that is, all council agendas are tentative until the schedule comes out, but they're they're looking at August third.
Okay, that was.
For the first meeting in August.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then I guess that means we're adjourned until July twenty seventh.
All right, thank you, everybody.
See you, see you then.
Thanks.